Very good, Steve, we're all set?
Okay.
Folks, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of June 11th, 2019. Would you be kind enough to join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, Steve, for the folks at home, we have the agenda up on the screen. If you'd like to hand over there. We've got two public hearings tonight. Okay. Very good. Uh, this is the first meeting of the month and we start the meeting, uh, the first meeting with the supervisor's report. This is a report of the financial condition of the town at any given moment, and this report is for the period that ends May 31st, 2019. We began with an opening balance of $7,285,435. We had receipts of $213,000 and change. Disbursements of $636,000, leaving us an ending balance on May 31st of $6,862,198. We each have, uh, not only the report, but a couple, just a very couple of budget adjustments and of course your monthly variance reports. Uh, May, there were just a couple of small highlights. We've got about $12,000 in CPF monies, although we received yesterday our check for June and that was $19,000 and change, Harry.
Okay.
All right. Um, we also received, uh, in May, um, tax interest and penalties of $5,725 and some reimbursement for, um, this natural resources law that we're discussing tonight. Um, that's from the Greenway. We applied for a grant from Greenway, uh, for the funds, um, to conduct, um, this change. Okay, and in your, excuse me, in your budget, um, adjustment package here, just a couple. Uh, one is a transfer to the playground and, um, we'll also be looking for, uh, approval to use Parkland monies for the creation of the pickleball courts, which I think, uh, are now beginning construction. Okay, are there any questions about the supervisor's report? Or any budget adjustments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the report and the budget adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we have the town clerk's report for the month. Sue?
Town clerk, monthly report for May 2019. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor as town revenue, Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for their space and moods program, $45. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. An amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $434.58. For a total, um, state and local revenues of $1,850. And that's pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law. And I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, so the Camp Town Clerk, the town clerk referring to the State Department. That's it.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay. We have, uh, a couple of public hearings. We can do that and then do announcements. Um, 7:35 is a public hearing on the very small but important proposed comprehensive plan amendment amending the subheading light industrial use. And Sue, if you'd be kind enough to read the public hearing notice?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on June 11th, 2019 at 7:35 local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. To hear all interested persons on proposed comprehensive plan amendments amending the subheading light industrial use. The proposed amendments would eliminate the zoning light industrial zone district. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated May 29th, 2019, ZK Camp Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Uh, thank you very much, Sue. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody tonight who would like to make some comments, uh, relevant to this public hearing, which is the one change to the comprehensive plan? Okay. Hearing none. Um, I'd like to, before we go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing, like to have entered into the record the, um, comments that we received back from, uh, both county planning and our town planning board. Um, our town planning board in support of making this change to the comprehensive plan. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have our second public hearing right on time, 7:40. It's, uh, regarding local law E proposed of 2019 amending the zoning law addressing natural resource protection. And Sue, if you'd be kind enough to read that notice?
Please take notice that a continued public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on June 11th, 2019 at 7:40 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York to hear all interested persons on local law number E proposed of 2019 entitled a local law to amend the zoning law addressing natural resource protection. The local law mentions Chapter 143 of the town code to address protection of natural resources in the town, including grass and surface waters, forests, minerals, including soil. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated May 29th, 2019, ZK Camp Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Sue. And I believe, as Sue mentioned, this is a continuation of a public hearing. And so at this time, I'd like to open it up. Would anybody like to make some comments or additional comments on the proposed changes? Okay. So I'm going to suggest that we keep, uh, this public hearing open so that we, um, uh, can have it open during our discussion, which is the second item on the agenda for this evening. All right, so let's, uh, just quickly, um, we'll do a few announcements. If we could, we're on that section of the agenda. Dutchess County would like you to know that there are funds available to assist senior citizens with home repair. Um, this is a Dutchess County senior rehab program that provides 0% loans and deferred payment loans up to $20,000 to income eligible senior citizens and households making between 0% and 50% of the county median who receive deferred payment loans and households making between 50% and 80% of the county median receive 0% interest loans. And you must be, um, 62 years or above to be eligible. Um, the, uh, guidelines and applications are available on the county's website, but we will make a link available on our website tomorrow. So if you're watching at home, we will put that up there as well. Rebuilding Together, which is another program that, um, some of us have participated in the past. Um, it's a, uh, nonprofit working to provide affordable homeownership by providing no-cost home repairs and modifications. Um, it is making an announcement once again that they are looking, uh, for some assistance in identifying qualified recipients who can benefit from the cost-free home repair and safety modification efforts, um, throughout 2019 and into 2020. Um, their application period is between June 1st and September 30th. And the Small Repair Service, uh, that's an application period. That's year-round. Um, there's an application which we will put on our website as well, or you could link to it on www.rtduchess.org. Uh, the other announcement we'd like to let you know is we had a very successful bond offering since our last meeting. Um, that was for the portion of the funds necessary to do a lot of the renovations that we're conducting at the, uh, recreation park and expansion of the additional playing fields and the conversion of the one playing field to an artificial surface, new lights, new basketball court, pickleball courts, accessibility, new fencing. And so we've had a successful, um, bond offering, better than we had hoped and expected. Um, and so I'm happy to share that with you. We also, uh, had Standard and Poor's updated and reaffirmed their rating on us, double A, um, even a possible suggestion if the income in our community continues to improve that they might even upgrade that. Um, but I won't weed you the whole multi-page report, but in essence, uh, their rating reflects the view of the town. Strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and, uh, weak debt and contingent liability profile, meaning very small amount of debt for what we are, um, able to handle. So we're very happy to get that report and especially considering, as we've said before, we have not raised taxes in the last few years and, uh, we're able to still make some capital improvements. So those are my announcements. Does anybody else have, uh, any other announcements?
Not me.
Okay. Very good.
Maybe we should just say that, um, people can still sign up for rec.
Oh, yes.
Park, uh, programming?
Yes.
Even though we, we had two Saturdays where you could come in person and do the whole thing on a Saturday, that's over, but you can still download the forms from the website and bring them to Town Hall or mail them in, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
For most of the programs, you can do the form and bring it the first day up. That's not preferred because we'd like to know roughly how many children.
How many kids we have.
Yeah, we're gonna be handling per program, but just letting people know that those options are still out there.
Thank you for reminding me. And, and this year, um, we need to have, it's a board of health requirement. We need to have immunization forms. And we also would strongly encourage you to sign up on our website for the notify me feature. I noticed today, for example, Ulster County made it a requirement that all children be vaccinated for measles in order to go to camps over there in that county. And there is a bill in the, uh, state legislature now that would mandate it for all children. Um, we'll see how that progresses during the week. Um, so if, if that's an issue for you, um, you know, you may want to, uh, stay up on that. So again, it's www.rehuck.org, notify me. You choose the topics you're interested in and you'll receive an email or a text so we can let you know, um, the latest and greatest, uh, with your local government. Okay, uh, we are at the point of public comments. Should we take a couple of public comments? Linda, public comments?
Uh, two points. It's a swing. Do that. Okay, um, number one. Last month, I mentioned that the Greg Farm was inaccessible with its renovations. My friend was denied services, uh, to be able to use the facilities there. I have another friend that wants to go and he also cannot get in there. There's steps, there's angles that can't get the, you know, either walker or a, a scooter in. And I wanted to know, uh, did you send, um, Steve Cole in to look at? Because I believe the planning board never reviewed the renovations.
Are you talking about the barn?
Yes.
Was that about the barn?
The whole barn complex. In fact, they have an exit and you go out the door. There are steps down, so. Not good. Um, number two. Playground, I looked at it and it's still inaccessible. The swing thing that you were so excited about, I couldn't get it to work. Some other adults that were on it couldn't get to work. And if it were to work and a child was in a wheelchair, it would probably slide all over the place.
You have to set the brake on the child to make it safe.
That's assuming they, they remember to do it. Kids get excited and they forget to do things.
So what's the town supposed to do about an individual in a wheelchair not setting a brake? I mean, we can't require people to.
I just wanted you, you could have an accident there.
We're telling you that it's been rated accessible by whatever boards rate things for handicapped accessibility.
Well, okay.
And this way, fun does work. You just have to be in the right spot. And we're told that over time it will loosen and be even more, you know, so if you were visiting the playground.
On the swings. The swings. I was hoping to have it so that somebody could take their wheelchair and just put it on the flat section and do it themselves. The way it's set up now, somebody has to lift the child and put it in, the person in there. You know, there may be a mother or father who is also disabled with a disabled child and can't do that. Also, the location of this swing is the furthest away from all the kids. It should be right in the center where they can interact with the other kids. There are very few things that a person in a wheelchair could do. And also, I don't know if you're changing it, but the, uh, the mulch is difficult to go through. I know you have a lot of money now, 6.8 million. Yeah, you got double A. The state said that you're sp- you're keeping too much money. Let's spend it on the kids. Build it and they will come, along with their parents and grandparents.
Can I ask you, Linda, like what kind of equipment are you envisioning that the, the children in wheelchairs won't be able to access? Like which parts of the area are you concerned about?
Well, right now, for the wheelchair, I mean.
So besides the woodchips, which, again, technically, the boards that tell us that things are accessible, they rate that accessible. I'm, I agree with you that it's not the best option, but I'm, I'm just saying that that's what's accepted. So anyway, I'm curious about your feedback about it.
There's nothing that the kids can pull themselves up
Okay.
to get some upper body movement.
Uh-huh.
Um, the things that are there, they, they can twirl and, you know, which is fine if they can get to that area. Um, but the, it's limited for what a child in a wheelchair can do.
You know, like the.
And again, they can't, they can't get on the swings themselves.
Sure. The seesaw type things I'm thinking of specifically are designed for someone in a wheelchair to be able to access very easily. Like the height of them and the backing on the back. All of that is, is an example of things that weren't there before. So I'm, I'm curious if you think that's an improvement at all or.
But it's an improvement and regular kids are really enjoying, you know, the facilities there. But it's limited with kids that are in wheelchairs or walkers or having difficulties.
Well, if you think of specific types of equipment that you think would be a better, as we like, you know, grade over time.
Okay, I have been doing some research online.
It would be rated if you wanted to send those in to the recommission. So we have an idea. Cause we did try to solicit feedback from families that had children that might have various challenges when we were picking out equipment. And a lot of the equipment we picked was based on that feedback. And so I'd, I'd love to have your feedback as we, you know, move forward and continue to update it, you know, over time.
Yeah, and then teeter totter, again, that's.
No, when specifically, actually, it has, so it has a back and it has special handlebars and things that are not something that's accessible. Well, it's actually at the height of a wheelchair, so it's designed specifically so that they can.
I'd like to see it.
Thank you for your feedback.
We'll keep at it.
Thank you, Linda.
It'll get better.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other public comments? Okay. So, uh, why don't we dive into our, uh, first item on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate Parkland monies. I think I mentioned the pickleball courts and, uh, John Kuhn is requesting that we, um, move some money from Parkland's Trust to the A Fund in order to pay for the work. Um, and that requires, not necessarily a board resolution, but certainly a board motion. Um, but we do have a resolution prepared for us, uh, tonight and that is resolution number.
I'll have to let you know tomorrow.
I'll have to let you know tomorrow, which is, uh.
Forgot to look that up.
Okay.
Yes.
No worries. We'll just say resolution number.
X.
Or letter A.
Did you say it's number one for this meeting?
Yeah, letter A for tonight. Uh, and number to be determined. Authorizing the appropriation of monies from Park Trust Fund. Transfer of $15,000 from Parkland's Trust to the A Fund to pay expenditures to the proposed pickleball court. And who would like to move that?
So moved. Second?
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, so we are at discussion of local law E and comprehensive plan amendment. Okay. So, since our last public hearing on this, we got some feedback from mostly part of the town's planning board that, um, county planning board sort of was a matter of vocal concern. Towns planning board. A few thoughts. And Ted Fink, um, sort of summarized them in a memo. And I asked him to prepare a red line of those changes so that tonight, when you discuss and decide what you'd like to have, uh, changed or not, um, you, you could see that that would look like the language. Um, the first, uh, deals with commercial forestry exempt activities the planning board had recommended, including a parcel size or acre threshold in relation to the proposed exemption of non-commercial cutting of trees for homeowners. A rule of thumb for sustainably managed forests in the Northeast is the taking of one cord of firewood per acre per year. Numerous forestry programs point to this threshold, including the state DEC. The related standard of sustainable forestry for the taking of board feet of lumber has also been included in the exemption rather than a simple number of cords or board feet regardless of parcel size. This subsection was also streamlined to consolidate and remove redundancies that were found in the list of exemptions. Okay. Commercial logging exemption for farms is number two. As part of the streamlining note above, timber operations which are permissible in association with farms in an agricultural district was clarified as an exempt activity. As long as logging is part of a farm operation, it would be permissible in all zoning districts on all farms that are within a New York State agricultural district. That was a legal definition that we had in our zoning code, which is now suggested to, to, uh, remain for clarity's sake. Existing forest tax law exemptions in the prior draft, commercial logging that is carried out under a 480A long-term plan. And you're gonna ask me how many landowners have this? Only three in the town. There are four parcels. And that is, um, sort of what we call the woodland equivalent of the ag assessment program. You have to develop a 10-year plan. You have to stick with the plan, not, uh, convert your property. Um, and so what they are suggesting is that, um, the planning board could take into consideration reviewing an application for a special use permit that plan. This could create a conflict with the tax status conferred on the property zone of the plan. So they are suggesting to, um, make existing plans, essentially grandfathering those and make them exempt from a special use permit. But new plans and five-year renewals would have to obtain that special use permit. Today's version retains the authority of the planning board to waive some requirements for the special use permit to reflect the oversight provided by a professional forester in preparing a long-term management plan. And then the planning board suggested adding small, uh, scale commercial logging to the use table, not just defining it as being, uh, below a certain threshold, but having a separate line. Uh, the fifth, that deals with water extraction. The change to the tables of uses for collecting the waters of a natural free-flowing spring and operating and associated bottle works from a special use permit in the RD3 and LI, uh, to a prohibited use in all districts. X was questioned as far as the ability of others, users to extract groundwater for public water supply and other uses once this is accomplished. Um, in my opinion, removal of the use in these two districts, only one, the RD3, if the zoning is adopted, would be no different than if the town or a village or private entity were to propose establishment of a community water supply system or brewery or cidery at the present time in any of the town's other zoning districts today, since the use is not currently permitted anywhere in the town except in the RD3 district. In fact, water supply and sewage disposal are mandatory for virtually any new land used. The key concept is that collecting the waters of a natural free-flowing spring and operating and associated bottle works is a principal use that is being eliminated, with the exception of the grandfathered, um, situation, while establishing a water supply system for all other uses is secondary. For a housing development or for community, um, the, uh, water supply is secondary to the principal use of the parcel. So there was some question to make sure that, you know, there was clarity that this did not pertain to public water supplies. Um, so there, the confusion is, is eliminated and it's entirely new stuff. Referral of extraction applications to CAC. The planning board suggested that applications for soil mining be referred to the CAC in the same way that it is proposed for commercial logging. The language has been added to create a referral mechanism to do so. There was a comment, uh, I think by Michelle Brad when, uh, she was speaking, um, with the planning board, uh, with regard to removal of the topsoil from a site of less than one acre. Um, it's clarified so that less than one acre of topsoil could be removed without site plan approval provided it does not involve the prime agricultural soils as has been mentioned. The text moves a hyperlink to the USDA website where prime farmland soils are classified. That's a helpful thing for, uh, folks who don't, um, know necessarily the type of soil they have and whether or not it's classified as prime. Uh, so it helps them comply with the proposed rule. Uh, there was a comment back in May by Julie Solomon asked whether the CAC could also be involved in the review of extractive operations like they were proposed for logging. This was addressed by the planning board comments previously that I just mentioned. Um, and she also mentioned small-scale extractions. So those are the comments, um, that came in from the town's planning board. And so, uh, as I mentioned too earlier, I asked Ted. And so, as I mentioned too earlier, I asked Ted to give us a red line of what those changes would be. And you'll notice if you wanna just see if we can do this, there aren't that many changes, but maybe we can go through them now for the public and for our own use. Page three of Local Law E proposed at the bottom, it has a new definition for clear cutting, because there's always that discussion of whether or not the property is clear-cut or not, and a definition which basically says when most or all trees are harvested from the site. It talks about, you know, when clear cuts are generally used for regenerating specific species of trees, but may also be used to improve wildlife habitat, salvage store more insect-damaged stands or convert poor quality forest stands to stands with higher quality stock. So that's page three. Page five is another definition, a new definition. Sustainable forest tree management is defined as management in which the volume of wood removed is equal to growth within the total forest, where the long-term health of forest ecosystems is maintained over time. Section one forty-three dash eleven on page seven was to be removed, the definition of timber operation. We've discussed his recommendation based upon Michelle's comments. Those comments being from the Planning Board, that we keep that definition in there so that there's no confusion. Page eight has a change in just a sentence here. Tree and topsoil removal involving less than one acre of land, provided that no soil is classified by the USDA as prime or removed from the site. Let me get to page eleven where there's a little bit more changes. Regulating forest use in such a way as to allow for sustainable forest forestry management that protects and preserves the environment is the language change on that sentence. Commercial logging operations are exclusive of the process of removing vegetation for installing improvements described in a subdivision plot or site plan approved by the Planning Board or site clearing preparatory to construction of a structure for which a building permit is required and which building permit has been issued by the code enforcement officer. So these are exemptions. So just clarification, that if it's clearing, that it's related to approved building permit or construction, site plan or subdivision that's been approved by the Planning Board, it's exempt, okay? From the commercial logging review. Number two, harvesting of up to, and here's the change, one cord per acre per year of lumber, okay? Number three is removed, which was site clearing prep to construction of a structure, and that's included in number one. Number four is trees removed in conjunction with a timber operation that's defined herein, because we put that definition back in. Number six is clearing of land for rights of ways by public utilities or their agents or trees removed for public road construction maintenance or realignment. Obviously, we need to remove trees for roads, so we need the ability to do that. We talk about Christmas tree farms, removal of hazardous of fallen trees on page twelve. And then eleven, twelve, and thirteen is covered already. We've discussed that. Now on page fourteen, we're talking about 480A, and this language has the grandfathering of the current plans in existence, which need to be filed with the town so that we know that they're to be grandfathered. Further down on F, we talk about the applicant, that is, the regulated applicant agrees to indemnify the town of Red Hook and to reimburse the town of Red Hook for any damage caused to town roads, bridges, or culverts. This is in large-scale logging operations. We have had some incidents where the edge of the roadways have been damaged by large operations. And so that determination we're adding in here should be by the town of Red Hook Highway Superintendent. Okay, we go for the next language change, we go all the way to page twenty-two. And just a change to remove the word small scale when discussing special use permit for an extractive operation. And then C includes the town CAC. It's only advisory, when it's referred to our CAC, it's for advice. Page twenty-three just talks again about removing small scale, those words, all of that is exempt. That's it. That is it. Julie, I'm sorry, did you wanna say something?
I just have one question on the clarification regarding removal of up to one acre of topsoil, as long as it's not prime.
Yes.
So in the language on page, oh, page already on the whole draft. The language prohibiting the removal of topsoil refers to both prime and statewide significance. I didn't know if those should be congruent.
Prime and statewide significance?
Yeah.
You only have prime.
Where where are you?
It's on page twenty-three of the prior draft.
I actually saw that too when I was reading it, and I wondered if it was because of the change about the definition through the USDA, which wouldn't necessarily do the status of statewide importance. So if we do wanna keep that in there, then we would have to add a secondary source for determining the statewide foreign soils.
Well, USDA.
But they're also at a different level here. This is in the extractive operations section versus the other is the threshold first section, right? Sighting different purposes.
I think it means might be pretty restrictive if we include it statewide. When you look at the town, not all of us have prime soils, but when you start to look at statewide, statewide goes to, there are classifications, one through three are prime, four through seven generally are statewide, and then you have eight, nine, ten, which are, you know, poor quality soil.
So there's a size limitation, right, in the one where we're only talking about prime, right?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
I think what the Planning Board and Michelle Brad noticed was essentially the ability for somebody to repeatedly, if you could say they own fifty acres, that they could, one acre at a time, extract and sell off topsoil, as it was previously written.
Well, what do you all think? Were there any of these changes that you would like to differ with? Any other changes now that, I mean, most of these are really clarifying. But there are some changes as far as grandfathering the ones that have a 480A plan. There were three landowners who have one in this town. And then they want about one cord per acre.
It's going to ten.
Right, so we, we would wanna have another public hearing on any changes we like that are proposed here. So maybe looking out to our twenty-sixth meeting. The question is, what draft do we wanna lay on the table for that discussion in that public hearing? I think we probably wanna send it back to the Planning Boards, but but they're not substantive enough to ask them for another opinion, because currently it's just incorporating their recommendations. If we, you know, if that's what we desire to do, is incorporate that.
I think this is really good feedback to get, and I agree with you, and it feels clarifying, like there's no big hot twist here. It's just further helping us, you know, define what we want to happen and what we don't want to happen and just really making the language clear, and that will serve everybody, Planning Board and enforcement people and residents trying to use it. So I support all these changes, I think they're, I think they're positive.
I could say this is at the the high end of adequate.
The high end, that's pretty good, huh?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, there's been changes made over time, and nothing's perfect, except you and me.
Yeah, I would I would support putting this draft.
Okay.
Out as the subject of the public hearing.
Okay.
I do want to, like, why don't we send it back to the Planning Board?
It's not gonna be for their.
We can count to ask, it's not an official referral, but we send it back to them and say, you know, we took your comments into consideration, these are the changes that were made.
Okay.
And then hopefully that they could look at this section again that we were discussing about the prime versus statewide and the accumulative effect of someone who owns a lot of land doing less than one acre, you know, repetitively. Is that something we should just investigate, I don't know.
That's a tough one to study.
It is a tough one.
I can't imagine you'd wanna, well, here's the thing, if you're selling soil, if you're extracting soil and selling soil, I mean, unless you're doing a septic, and we have some experienced people in the audience who know about that, you wouldn't really want to be selling poor quality soils. Right?
Well, yeah, but the statewide soils.
That's what I mean.
Are not necessarily poor qualities.
No, that's my point, is that if you're if you're extracting and selling, you're gonna be doing statewide or better. I don't think, you know, unless, again, does that make sense, what I'm saying? Right, unless you're doing a septic where you don't want, you know, to have soils that drain well.
Right, but I I think that what we should just see if we can do a little more research at here, at this public hearing,
Okay.
is whether we need to address accumulative effect of small continuous.
Make a read on that.
Reasons, right.
Okay. What do you think about, what's your thoughts?
Well, somebody explain to me number five of Ted's memo. In other words, like, the language, collecting the waters of a natural, it's breaking up. It was gonna be eliminated in all districts.
It is.
I don't find it confusing at all, and his his explanation seems to be that you don't need to follow the recommendation of the Planning Board. Is that correct, am I right about that?
That's exactly what he's saying, he's saying that there's no confusion.
In proposed legislation, we have not eliminated that.
We have not.
Okay.
We're removing the collection of waters of a natural free-flowing spring.
In all districts.
In all districts.
With that language.
With the exception, we have one operation that's been grandfathered.
That's the only question I had, otherwise I agree with Harry and with Sarah and Justin.
All right, so why don't we, shall we take a few minutes and do a little secret work? Or what do you think, or should we leave that to?
You know, we could do, if you want to.
Wanna do part two, 'cause we didn't do part two before, and a lot of this is fairly minor, if not just enough.
And we also have Ted's draft of the consistency determination review sheet, so we can review that without taking action, but we can review it just to make sure that we don't have questions that could be answered by Ted in the meantime, right?
Well, that's a good idea, yeah. And this brings up, we're gonna quickly walk through, thank you for being patient, those of you who are next on the agenda. Go through part two.
Yeah, all right. Just so you know, the next Planning Board meeting was canceled.
Yeah, I know.
On the seventeenth, just for the planning, timing calls.
Yeah.
But they're not really making a recommendation, but.
I just think informational.
Yeah.
So I just send them the law.
Yeah, when we get to the resolution, there's language that says, send them a copy.
What kind?
For information.
Non-referral.
Right.
And about the county, same thing?
No, we would need from the county, because these comments, essentially, we're responding to the Planning Board's comments and making their changes, right? Whereas the county, we need to circulate it from there again. But we can call them, I assume, and ask them to get it back by the time we got to the next meeting, they could cooperate.
Okay, part two is a full EAF assessment form, and we'll just quickly go through the major topics. Impact on land, proposed action, may involve construction on our physical alteration, and the answer is obviously no. It's a change in zoning, impact on geological features.
Not sure we didn't check, no, but I would think you would check, no, yes?
That would be a no for that. Impacts on surface order, that's a no. The only impact it may have is a positive one. Certainly won't create a new water body, dredging, impact on groundwater, newer additional use of groundwater, the answer is no.
What page you want?
Sorry, I'm on page, well, part two, Harry?
Part two.
Yeah, that's part one, so go past page thirteen and you'll be on part two.
All right.
All right?
No worries.
No worries.
No worries.
Is that page three?
And now we're on part three of, I'm sorry, page three of part two.
Part two, okay.
Okay, impact on groundwater was a no, impact on flooding. Because this is a zoning change and not a construction project, a lot of these answers are no. Impacts on air, plants and animals, agricultural resources. Aesthetic. Historic and archaeological. Is a no, although he hasn't checked with quality.
No, he checked small, no, we're small impact.
No, we're small impact on them instead, I see. Impact on open space and recreation is a no. Critical environmental areas, we don't have any in this town. Impact on transportation, energy, noise, odor, odor and light. Human health, you could make an argument it could be positive. Consistency with community plans.
If you go to H.
H, he's got proposed plan amendment, is designed to create internal consistency with other comprehensive plan policies and proposed zoning amendments are consistent or ready.
I would say it's actually important to mention that that question trips everybody up over the top, because it's written sort of backwards.
Don't make it.
Right, so you would think it would be yes, 'cause it's consistent with the community character, but says the proposed project is inconsistent, so that's why it says no.
Proposed plan amendment is designed to create internal consistency, yes. Okay, I hear you. Consistency with community character, no. Is the answer to, is it inconsistent with the character?
Right.
Okay, almost finished, we are finishing part two. Does the draft neck deck for us?
And I think what Ted does is review the history of the development of this language by the Extraction Working Group. And he refers first to the language in the plan that they reviewed and determined was really inconsistent with the trend of the zoning changes that were being proposed. So this is the cleanup to establish the requirement for like industrial zoning districts. um the the requirement for like industrial zoning districts, the floating zones, um to remove that, so that's the comp plan amendment. Um, and then uh he also discusses the um the proposed uh local law amendment, I think really uh in the context of um Actually, this is all about the comp plan. And I, so I think uh his first, yeah, okay, his first discussions have to do with um
Well, he's got, uh, project will result in no significant adverse effects on the environment and therefore an environmental effect statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued, so that's the draft.
Right, right. Yeah, here's the
This includes, by the way, we're doing a secret review for both the comp plan and the proposed zoning change
Together, right.
together, because it's integrated into the zoning.
Right.
And so there's a very lengthy uh language associated with the neck deck that he's prepared, I'm not gonna read it all, but it talks about the history. Includes some of the uh
An overview of the Extraction Working Group.
Hmm, hmm.
And he just focuses on that these are all designed to conserve natural and cultural resources, so that they will not have an adverse environmental effect.
Just a tiny idea on the top of page three or three. The White House has it too, and could just
Hmm, yes, little typo.
Just an official record. Little typo.
There's a couple of those.
Okay.
We're not gonna issue a neck deck tonight, I don't think.
Right.
And we're gonna wait to do that for next week, we have a a consistency determination and a cap form as well in your packet, and you just updated that um based upon the draft changes. And since you've accepted them for the next public hearing. You can see as you move through the pages.
Primarily, he's noted that no development is proposed, so a lot of these questions would have development, but he does indicate that uh this would establish some rules that would uh remove the potential for establishment of large scale sand and gravel in the L W R P area, so it's protective of the L W R P areas. And it would also require planning board approval for significant um modification of land vegetation and other geographical forms in the coastal area, which would be, again, protective of the coastal areas that the L W R P is designed for.
A lot of
For purposes of review, and then when you take action, just have done your homework and have a chance to go back and do it again.
And uh just for the record, incorporating the comments from, or the responses from county planning again. Um, Sam Phelan, the chairman of the local planning board, Ken Miglarelli was here in front of us at the last planning, uh, started the last public hearing. Um, I did do a little research for him. Um, there were some activities he wanted to do under the zoning law, and it turns out, and and the easements on his farm that I researched, that those activities he was interested in are are not permitted. And I think those are all the comments we've had to incorporate, so um we do have a town of Red Hook Resolution B, number two B, to determine tomorrow, dated June eleven twenty nineteen, establishing a date for continued public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of local law E proposed as revised, and so this resolution talks about the revision and the incorporation. Um, and looking for um uh a referral of just a copy for any additional input, but not a formal referral, we will be waiting uh for comments back from the planning board, since we have essentially incorporated incorporated all of the comments. Um, so let's pick a date and time to continue, so June twenty-sixth. Um, we'll get to later in the meeting, the need for doing a another town board meeting, a special meeting next week, but this, that would not be enough time for this for the continuation, 'cause we do have to read notice. Um, and we need ten days, so uh looking for the June twenty-sixth meeting, and somebody is not here, June twenty-sixth, is that right?
I'm not here.
You're not here, June twenty-sixth, okay.
I actually hadn't told you that, so I just thought I was on a curfew.
Well, I thought that may have been, but no, that's July, okay.
Yeah.
Um, are you pretty comfortable with the way the draft reads?
Yeah, I feel really good about it.
Okay.
So I'd be sorry to miss it, but
You'd be okay with that, or whatever?
But the, yeah, I wouldn't have any problem if you wanna add it.
Okay.
And I think you should, 'cause we, you know, I'm writing more, but not eventually, we've worked hard on it, and don't see any reason to wait.
It's time. Okay.
Certainly don't wait for me.
Does that work for folks if we did it June twenty-sixth at um seven thirty-five? And this is just on the law itself, we closed the public hearing on the comp plan, does that work for you, Bill, or you?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to say?
No.
So we're not gonna meet the next week?
We are gonna meet next week.
Oh, next week.
Just we're gonna discuss the
Just not about next. Just not about this.
We need to go to school.
It's not about this.
So we're meeting next week on Wednesday and the following week on
Yeah. Next week on Tuesday and uh the following week on the fourth Wednesday, as as usual.
Okay, so next, next week.
Okay. So uh we have this resolution, uh would somebody like to move it to continue the public hearing, June twenty-sixth, seven thirty-five?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you very much, okay. Well, one thing you should never do is get a new chairperson on the committee, who does a great job, who wants to give you a quick update of what they've been working on, and then tell them to come at eight o'clock, and it's eight thirty, and it's not their time yet. So I've made that mistake, but needless to say, thank you for your patience, Hi Ping. Um, it's eight thirty and we are on the next item on the agenda, which is an update to our disaster preparedness plan. Hi Ping, would you like to join us at the microphone for?
Can I speak from here, can everybody hear me?
I don't know that we could.
It will pick up better, yeah, okay.
You're being idiotic.
Um, so
Thank you.
This is the hard copy of the plan, and we only have one hard copy that I know of, I think that everyone was sent an electronic copy this morning, did you all receive it?
Yes, yep, we have
To the office, oh, you all crapped it out, well, we
It just gets printed out for us.
Magically, it comes from the supervisor's office, with the assistance of Jackie Fenero, I might add.
Okay.
Oh, so there were just some minor, minor changes, putting that in alphabetical order, but the content should be the same. So um I think you all know that the last time we had an emergency plan was twenty fourteen, so this is an update of the twenty fourteen plan. Um, half the committee had been around for the original plan and the other half are brand new. I agreed to chair the the committee, but I am the least experienced and have the least expertise, but you have an incredible committee. You have great representation from Bard, Red Hook School District, Health Quest, fire departments, um, and there is just an incredible amount of expertise on the committee. So we've been working together since August of twenty eighteen and updating the plan, and to make sure that we are in compliance, we had a meeting with Bill Beal, he came down and met with the committee and gave us some guidance and gave us some documents to use as a template. So I feel pretty comfortable with the way the plan is now. Um, there were some minor tweaks, um, maybe some changes in the format, but the plan itself is pretty good, we just needed to flush it out. There were some things that we added to the plan. The last thing any of us wanna do is create a document, put it in a pretty binder and put it on the shelf, and not have any sense of who actually saw it, especially if their name was on the plan. So I've added a few pages to the plan, so that we can actually track who has signed off, who has gotten a copy, not just the board, but also community members, um, the mayor of Tiffely, the mayor of Red Hook, um, and other stakeholders, and Chris Scholl, you know, obviously has to be updated with the plan. So um we wanna track who is getting a copy of the plan, there are lots of names, you know, aside from the town board members who have responsibility for implementing the plan, should we have a disaster or an emergency, um, other department heads, so it would be good to know that they actually got a copy of the updated plan. So I'm really happy that we are able to put it online, um, Google Drive, so that we can update it, so that if we do have a revision, it'll be noted, and that way you can just insert the new page rather than print out. I think we're up to eighty-seven pages, because one of the things that we did was add an annex section, and that's a section that can't be foiled. So that's something that we learned from Bill Beal, which was really, really helpful, because in the twenty fourteen plan, we actually had a copy of the Red Hook School District's safety plan, um, and if we put it in the annex, we can have the whole plan and it won't be foilable, which obviously for safety reasons is a really good idea. Um, so there's still some missing pieces in the plan, like the Red Hook School District's plan and the Bard plan, because they're still working on them. But um the plan itself is really ready for the board to review and hopefully adopt um soon. It is a living document, uh, there are lots of people, lots of contacts that will change over time, not necessarily within, you know, after next year, so it will constantly be updated. Um, so that's the basic plan. Let's see, so I think I've covered most of the um changes, I do have, you know, one of the things that we talked about was whether or not the board, the elected officials needed to have FEMA training, I won't ask you who's been trained, um, but I have these handouts. So you can do the trainings online if you haven't, it is not, it is not a legal requirement, because it's not enforceable, but at least the town supervisor should be trained, or if he hasn't already been trained, so one, training's only two hours online, the other one is three and a half hours online, and I think it would be really, really helpful if you haven't done it, just to get an overview, to get familiar with the language and the structure, so that should we have some sort of emergency or a disaster in our community, we know how things work. So, let's see, the other thing, um, future activities. You know, our committee is supposed to be focused on disaster preparedness, um, so it's a, it's very specific to what, how do you respond to an emergency? Um, but you could really open it up, how do you prepare, um, how do you respond, and how do you recover? So this is only the beginning, there are so many different activities that we could, that we will take on over time. So one of the activities um that we'd like to plan is a tabletop, and so at the next meeting, we will talk about how to schedule a tabletop exercise um for our community, another topic that has been ongoing is nine nine-one-one signs. So some of our emergency responders have a really difficult time locating homes, you know, we've all driven up to that row of mailboxes, and we don't know which driveway to go down and which house is associated with one, which number. So I know that Robert is working on coming up with some sort of a plan, so that we can take care of the entire community and at least, you know, take that off the table in terms of getting to to people quickly. Um, another topic that has come up is how to identify at-risk populations and at-risk individuals. Um, so that is definitely something that, you know, we're trying to work on, how to reach them, whether we do a mass mailing, going to community centers, uh, Red Hook Commons, you know, trying to develop those relationships, um, you know, so again, we only started meeting in August of twenty eighteen, so we um have a long list of to-dos. So that is definitely uh one of them, um, you know, citizens' preparedness workshops is being offered by Dusches County, it's a question of scheduling them and notifying people, and, you know, so we'll continue to facilitate that. Bill Beal will be offering a training for elected officials in September, so I hope that you can all attend that. So my background is, um, I'm a mental health professional, and that's how I got involved in this, I started volunteering for the American Red Cross, so I'm really, really concerned with trauma that our communities experience, and also as a Red Cross volunteer, I've also staff shelters, so I know how difficult it is to get people to go to a shelter, and oftentimes people wait too long and they can't get out, so again, you know, identifying those at-risk populations. And I think all of us who've lived in York or in this area long enough have noticed an uptick in tornadoes, microburst, macroburst, whatever you call them, the climate-related changes that are really impacting and are hitting closer and closer to home. So I I went down to Fishkill when we opened the shelter after the microburst in Wappingers and saw the devastation. So it has incredible psychological impact on communities. Aside from those kinds of emergencies, um, the limousine crash in Skowhary, you know, that could happen anywhere, and to be prepared for something like that, and I'm not saying that we have to have all the mental health people online all the time, but making those connections with who, which community agencies would respond, how they respond, and also being sensitive to who would respond, I think the, our fire departments, the emergency responders in Skowhary, they had a terrible, terrible time, aside from the families that lost someone, it was those emergency responders. So there's just so many different levels of response, and I don't know that, I don't think that the emergency plan has really addressed that at this point. Um, but I just wanted to plant a seed, um, in terms of emergencies and opening, you know, that lends a little bit more. So I think that's it for my five-minute update, so the plan is yours, please review, and uh if you have any questions, suggestions, I noticed uh some editorial grammatical, you know, I appreciate those, I don't know, you know, when I look at a document over and over and over again, I stop seeing things, so please, if you notice some grammatical error, you know, let me know, and we can easily edit, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hi Ping, before you sit down, before you sit down, we're not letting you off that easy.
I have a, yeah, a couple of questions.
I'm not the expert, but I have a good facility.
No, that's fine, Sarah, did you wanna go first, you had a question?
Okay, you can.
No, I just wanted to say, did you wanna talk to us about shelters, because something's different this year with our shelter?
Yes.
Let the folks at home know.
Okay, so shelters, I think that people used to, well, we did have the Red Hook High School as a shelter, but because they are going through some major renovations, they don't meet the newer, the requirements of the American Red Cross as being a designated shelter, so at this point, it's Bard and it's um Mylan Town Hall, so those are the approved Red Hook shelters. That doesn't mean if there was a major need that we wouldn't be opening other shelters, I think we have a list of all the churches that are available, that we could possibly use. And um so in terms of Red Hook School District, uh, the high school might be off the table right now, but we have talked about the middle school, they don't have a generator, but there are grants available, and so it's something that we could um look into, and I think that the American Red Cross would help us um with grant writing if, you know, it's it's on that list of activities um that we will definitely pursue. So that is one of the changes, um, and it's, you know, I think that you will have a discussion in terms of what can be made public, what can be shared on the website with the public in terms of our plan, one of the um, one of the things that we do not want to publicize is the shelter before an event happens, because we don't want people going to what they think will be automatically open when that may not be the case. So we have to be sensitive to that, that, you know, we don't publicize, oh, this place will always be a shelter, and have people assume that it will be open.
So another reason why they should sign up for the notification from the town.
Please, yes, yes, sign up for alerts on the website.
Well, so just to push back a little bit on that, because that was a question I had, looking through it a little bit, was um like, how much of this would be online and accessible? You know, we have encountered many times on the internet and data, everything is down, so I'm just wondering So I'm just wondering about the idea of relying on the town's notification system and other types of media. If, if, if some kinds of emergencies happened, those things wouldn't be accessible. You know, you run out of power at your house and you can't charge your device and then you're not getting text messages or whatever. So I guess I'm wondering like what, if you, and you may not know now, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but maybe something your committee could look at is sort of like, what is the, what is the general protocol for like letting people know ahead of time? What the generally assumed like method for finding out is? Maybe we don't know what the shelter definitely will be, but giving people a sense for what the shelters probably will be or how they could find out, that's not just our assumption that they're going to get text messages and emails and things. Because I'm just, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with us just assuming that that's like.
Absolutely. We're not assuming that.
Okay.
We're definitely not assuming that.
Okay.
That's just one of the vehicles.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So, you know, we've talked about the possibility of sending out a postcard to let people know how they can get information, you know, a list of radio stations. Citizens' preparedness, you know, they send out, they distribute backpacks and some of them include a hand-operated or battery-operated radio so that people could tune in to radio stations. We're reaching out to ham radio operators to see how they might become part of our communication system. You know, notifying people, letting them know that they could be on a list where the New York State troopers might come to your house, you know, when there is a major power outage, if you identify yourself as someone who doesn't have a generator or has medical needs, that kind of thing. So, you know, so we, we are putting together, you know, a list of resources, thinking about how to expand that list and definitely thinking, you know, being sensitive. Not everybody, I mean, the internet could be down. Not everybody, even if you are computer savvy and you're used to checking the internet or tuning in that way. You know, what happens when everything is down?
Right, absolutely. So another question I have kind of piggybacking off of that and it like goes on a lot of things you've said is I noticed you said it's a living document. I have a question in my mind about how, where that lives, how secure it is, who maintains the living document, who has access to it? How does that interface with the town clerk's office, which is really our records management office? So can you just talk a little bit about that or is that something your committee is like thinking about?
Okay, well, so at this point, when we share a document, the only two people that are allowed to edit are me and Lori Pierce. So when we send it out, you have the option of, you know, viewing only, comment, edit. So we're limiting the editing and also the viewing. We don't, it's not something, you know, I think that you will have to decide what goes on the website, what parts of it, what parts get redacted actually goes on the website for public viewing. But we'll have to figure out that list of people besides the board and the mayors, the people who are actually in the plan, the committee members.
But the official copy, once she was adopted, should be filed and clicked on because she is the keeper of the records.
So they will always have a copy.
And also, you know, she should always have a copy. If nobody else has one, she should have one, so.
Right, okay.
But there will be copies in my office, there'll be copies with the high recent attendant, all those that are engaged during, you know, emergency management or disaster.
Yeah, I'm, so, okay. And then who, so who decides how like, you know, things like the school safety plan, for example, that is very sensitive information. So like, does a copy of that go on all of those copies?
Well, the board will.
So it's trying to sound like a lot of.
The board will decide what gets adopted and what's available and when, I think references what's foilable, not foilable, what's redacted. It's, it's only because it has personal telephone numbers listed for many individuals and cell phones and stuff.
She's, she's redacted even from our version, safety and security protocols.
Protocols, if there's a.
Nobody should have except for designated people.
Designated, in the case of a school shooter or something like that, yeah.
So the school will provide two versions, whether it's a comprehensive one that we used to have and then a shortened version, abbreviated overview.
Two other, three other questions. I think like eventually, once it gets adopted, I would really love to see this on our website in whatever version we decide. But I'm wondering if your committee could think about also, I feel like a plan like this is a lot for, like a normal person isn't going to like download this for fun on a Thursday and read the whole thing, right? So I'm wondering if you guys could talk about, maybe with the communications committee, that we have like ways that we can break it up a little bit into like, you know, five things you should know in the case of an emergency or what, I don't know. You know what I mean, like there may be some ways that we should.
So I think, I'm going to just say, I think this is not that document. I think that, that.
That's what I'm saying, no, no.
They have, right, the committee's previously prepared some other documents for us like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is like beside this, on, on, like on the town website, there's a feature committee. And it'd be great if, if along with this, whatever version, like I said, lives there, if we also had a couple like resources that people, so I'm just putting that out for you to think about.
So right now, if you go to the website and you go to disaster preparedness committee, there are two documents that are currently up there. One is, has to do with nine-one-one and the other one is the emergency handbook that's prepared by Homeland Security. So that goes through, I'm not sure if that's, would be helpful, if that's what you are thinking of or would you want something that's more specific to Red Hook? Because in the emergency handbook, it's really, really comprehensive.
Yeah.
It talks about different weather-related events and, you know, documents that you should have and what kind of a plan you should have with your family.
I mean, I think there's some things out there that probably are, like I'm sure there's lots of things that already exist, right, that are out there and maybe some of them are appropriate for us to link to, but maybe some could be local. I'm just putting that out there for when you're, I'm sure you have a lot of other things you're doing, but on your list of things, I know the communications committee would be interested to work with your committee on.
That would be great, I'd.
So, if I could China for a second. So we had the county emergency management division come here and do a citizens' preparedness thing back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, something like that. And so they did have sort of a cheat sheet. And so that might be something you may want to take and just sort of modify for Red Hook and see if that's something that, you know, would be helpful for folks to have. We could maybe send it out with a water bill or something like that so they can always have it handy in their drawer.
Yes.
What to do, what to keep in stock, you know, that kind of thing. So to, to your point.
That's a good idea.
So, go ahead.
I just noticed when I was looking at the town board, because I was curious like what our responsibilities are. We don't really have any defined ones.
No.
So, I mean, that's pretty typical for town board members, so I'm not really complaining, but I'm just saying, if you run across the areas, like, I don't know, you know, I know for myself, I'm, I am reading that thinking like, well, what is my responsibility? I'm, I'm not sure, you know, it just says like to be available or whatever. She'll take all steps necessary to prepare. You know, as you go along, again, like if you have thoughts about how we could best serve this plan, you know, I think we would all appreciate just your, you know, we kind of know generally, like we're just kind of supposed to be spokespeople and helpful and, you know, kind of camp whatever else is going on, but if there's specific things you think we should. So much of it depends on who is available, who's on vacation, who's in town.
And so I think that's why it's sort of left open to who's ever in charge to assign the roles. And that's why it's so important to go through the FEMA training so that you're sort of familiar with the language and what the different roles are. And I think we, you know, we talk about some of the roles, but they aren't specifically assigned for the most part. And so much of it, I think, is, you know, just liaison, communication and who knows? You know, that's, I mean, the chances of all of us being in town at the same time and available.
Well, I would say the chain of command section is an important section. I was joking with my counterpart in Mylan, who took a very timely vacation the last winter when we had that huge storm that had all the roads closed and trucks off the road and so on and so forth. And so a town board member had to, to jump in his stead and take care of that. So familiarity with the plan and, and, you know, maybe coming to that tabletop might be something that, you know, folks might be interested in.
On the last in-depth thing, when I was looking through this, something called, and I also wanted to, so you referred to a couple of resource inventories and I went to look for them and they're not here on the pages that are indicated, so.
Which ones?
So let's see, on, on page thirty?
Okay, I'll have to look.
Right, and page thirty-one, at the bottom, there's a reference that says, you know, see attached inventory on pages, whatever. And if you go to those pages, it's not the inventories. So I'm not sure if that's something that's redacted for tonight and that changed the numbering of the pages that you gave us.
I think that's the important one, right?
Attached fifty-eight and fifty.
It, it may have, the page numbers may have changed.
Maybe some page numbers just changed.
Resource inventory, I know resources.
Page fifty-nine, oops, I see.
I think it's sixty-one, sixty-two, right?
Little things like that that we catch, so anyway, I just happened to.
I really appreciate it.
I just happened to try to look something up today and then I noticed that that wasn't right, so.
The page numbering, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes.
So I couldn't find the inventory that was mentioned.
All right, I have to, um, yeah. So the pages, the highway department.
I think it's sixty-one through sixty-three or sixty-four.
Town and metro highway department, inventory should be page sixty-six.
Okay.
And that's, okay.
Okay, you can just send those changes along, I think. We'll get those if we just double check and we'll take a look and see what else we can.
Yes.
No worries.
Any of your, yes, yes, observations, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, really, this is, unfortunately, it's very important.
Right, and a lot, a lot of work.
A lot of work and thank the committee members, please.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Item number four on the agenda. Audit reports. So each year, we have our auditor, Lori Doty, take a look at the various departments and audit them and issue an opinion, a management letter. And so we have those reports who've been provided to review for the general fund, the justice courts, the town clerk and town collector, the collector. I should learn to speak before I start a meeting. Offices. And the summary for the folks at home is that the auditor, once again, says that she has reviewed these departments and has found no recommendations for improvement. And that the reports are intended for the use of the town and for the offices, the town of Red Hook supervisor, the financial officer of the town. And that is for the general fund, for the town clerk and tax collector, same thing. That she's found no deficiency in those offices and the financial protocols. And then lastly, for the justice courts, of which we have two. There were no recommendations to improve internal controls there either. And this is an audit of the cash deposits in those courts. Anybody have any questions on those audits?
Yep.
Okay, very good. I don't know that we need to accept them or approve them.
Lori Thader, right?
Lori Thader, okay. Agenda item number five is reorganization. A couple things we need to find some additional folks for assessment or review or just a note. We are coming upon the time where we need to consider whether or not we would like to appoint our assessor for a full term. That's a six-year term. That term ends at the end of September, you know, it's that odd cycle. And so I don't know what your thoughts are. I'm just going to say that, you know, we've, we've been very pleased with Cheryl and the work that she's done, both her work and the way she interacts with her residents and taxpayers. And I would welcome your, your input.
What more would you say?
What's that?
What more would you say?
What's the question?
Well, the question is, shall we entertain an appointment of the town assessor for a six-year term ending in September of twenty fifteen? Yeah, sorry, we passed twenty fifteen. Let me do that again, twenty twenty-five. I can't believe that I'm saying twenty twenty-five. So the motion is by myself and then a second, is that a second, Harry?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I think she's great.
Okay, well, that sums it up. Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Cheryl, we congratulate you. We're very excited to have an assessor for an extended period of time and certainly appreciate and hope that you will have appreciated the person in that office. And we, once again, would like to ask for your patience. Not only is she doing a great job, but she's also taking up a lot of the work that was done by our deputy, who has been out recovering nicely, we'd like to say, from an illness and we hope to have her back soon. But Cheryl's done an outstanding job in the meantime. So thank you again for your patience. Okay, correspondence, we have just a few things in correspondence. Speaking of assessments, New York State Department of Taxation and Finance reports to us that they have certified our role and our equalization rate of a hundred percent. And that is for, I don't know how many years in a row now, but it's certainly at least seven or eight.
Since oh-seven.
What's that?
Since oh-seven, oh-seven.
We have that written in. So that's well, how time flies when your equalization rate is on the mark. Okay. We have a notice from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to the town supervisor, writing in response to your letter, which was from on behalf of the board, expressing interest in meeting and discussing evaluation of an extension of a proposed wastewater collection system in the town of Red Hook. And the Board of Directors has given consent to that. Senator Bridget Barkley says she looks forward to working with us on that. New York State, the Department of State is responding to DEC with regard to the proposed work modification of the Tivoli Bay's deck, which I think we showed to you folks at home at the last meeting. And they approve of the work that's being proposed. We have a letter that we've been CC'd to from the Ropope Farm LLC, not to be confused with Ropope Farms on River Road. This is the property diagonal from Hannaford. I think the new owner has been utilizing the property in a way that doesn't conform to zoning with respect to having.
The old Zitz farm, is that the property?
Uh, Zeats, I believe that it, Zeats, yes, not Zitz. Um, and.
He's been landing a helicopter there back and forth?
Yeah, and that's, he was notified by our building and zoning that it's not allowed and his letter is, he seemed to have some relief. And I think that our building and zoning department is going to direct them to the ZBA.
Is that the same property they wanted to build the pond?
Uh, well, this may be the one acre right on the corner.
Extract all the soil on the.
I think this is the one acre on the corner.
So-called irrigation pond?
I don't know. Uh, this is different, this is a new one. And I think this is right by the barn. There's a landing area there, from what I. From what I understand from neighbors, that's where it's been happening. And so he is making a plea to get some relief from that.
Isn't that like a ZBA thing?
Yep, and I think that's what Bob and Steve will be telling him, is go in front of the ZBA and plead your case. But I think obviously, you know, given what we saw on the news yesterday, the tragedy, by the way, a Dutchess County resident died in that helicopter craft yesterday in Manhattan. You know, we'll, we hope that the, our boards take seriously the safety considerations there. Okay, that's all I have in correspondence anymore, public comment, because Linda, right before we go into, um, we are going to go into attorney-client and a matter under litigation vis-à-vis an Article VII related to a patent certiorari proceeding. So Linda, public comment.
Have you all had the opportunity to look at the Dutchess County website? If you notice, you can change the font, make it larger. And it will read to you. They use a program called Recite. However, if you look at our town website, can't do it. So we need to improve in order to meet ADA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, that's it for tonight. Thank you all very much for joining us at this time. I'd like to make the motion that we go into both attorney-client and executive session to discuss a matter under tax litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you very much, thank you, Steve.